All right, I'm gonna go ahead and call our work session to order. The time is now 5:01. Roll call has been taken, and we'll go ahead and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, now we're on to item three, which is Public Comment on Non-Agenda Items. So we do have Agenda Item Four, which is part of the work session. Is there a public comment on non-agenda items?
Looks like no public comment on non-agenda items.
All right, so now we'll move on to four, which is the Student Handbook Discussion. And I'm gonna go ahead and just open the floor. This is a work session, so items are were less formal as we would be in a regular school board meeting, but I'm gonna go ahead and open the floor and let our council start us off with a statement, or I'll just let Bea talk.
Okay. So I think tonight what the board is doing is gonna be talking about things that are being added to handbooks. What's a little different for you guys is that this board has never approved handbooks before, and so we're you're looking at them tonight, and that's fine. But there are gonna be some things, and I know from from what I've heard from some trustees, that there's some concern about some of the additions to the handbook with regard to how those are gonna impact students. And I think that you you have a lot of sympathetic ears within your administration about that as well. However, as we know, the legislature passed several laws during this last legislative session that directly impact students and potentially student rights, frankly. So the question then comes down to what do we do with that? In general, as publicly elected officials, you guys took an oath to uphold the Constitution of the United States and the laws of the state of Montana. If you don't agree with those laws, there are avenues to to address that and to challenge them. Just saying we're not gonna do it isn't a good one, because that puts you in a difficult spot where you are opening yourself up to potentially to recall, but also signaling to your students and staff that if there are particular rules you don't like, you don't have to follow them, and we can't we can't do that. But I think it's gonna be important for you guys to talk about what your concerns are with these particular additions, and then allow when it gets to that time, allow folks to comment also on what what direct harms their children or themselves might be facing from these. And you guys have a decision to make about what to do with your student handbooks. We need to start the year with student handbooks in place. We have to. We're an entity that revolves around this concept of due process, so student and staff handbooks. We have to give them notice of what the rules are and the ability to follow the rules. If we don't start out with any rules, then we have no ability to hold students or staff accountable to what are already established rules in the district. So I would ask I caution you guys not to not to start say, let's be conscientious objectors and not follow the law, because you're opening yourselves up there a little bit. But certainly, talk about what you believe the impacts of these of these new statutes might be.
Yep, nope, and then that brings me to the agenda for the next meeting. That will be information only. I do see this as administrative oversight. That's something that we as a board does not oversee that, and that's why it came to us, because of the new legislative laws that have been passed. But as a board, we can do a lot of the discussion, even in terms of adopting resolution or adopting or not even adopting or it's adopted in there. We're gonna table it, correct?
Well, but yeah, I mean, we're for the next session, what you the first item on that I saw on the agenda had to do with approving the student handbooks. And again, the board doesn't approve student handbooks. So what I would suggest as an option is is that you could table that. It doesn't prevent the administration from issuing the handbooks, but it gives you you guys the ability to still talk about there are some things that are added to our handbooks that maybe philosophically we don't agree with. What are our options as an entity when that happens?
And one of them is by through a resolution as a board on what we do want to say what we stand behind, that we don't believe are any of those new laws that have been changed. But I'm gonna go ahead and open it up for discussion, and if you guys have any specific questions, that's why we have Bea here for this work session. And I'll keep trying to look in online at you, Meg, for your hand too as well, but I'm going to open it up for discussion. Vice Chair Walker Andrews.
This is really just a question. I mean, we can just open it up for discussion, or we could take these changes sort of one at a time. Which way do you want to do it?
Trustee Decker.
I think that because this is a work session, and so it's kind of a freer conversation, taking the items one at a time might, in the interests of time and knowing that folks want to have the opportunity to share, we might not get to the heart of the conversation. And if we're not making a decision now during this work session, which we're not, because it's not an action item, and if it has become an information item, it's still on the agenda as an action item, but we, you know, we might have the opportunity to turn it into an information item as as a motion later. But anyway, I guess what I'm saying is, I I would propose that we simply have a discussion about the items that that really have brought us to set up this work session, rather than go through them as if we're taking action on each piece, because we're not doing that, certainly not right now.
I agree with you, Trustee Decker. Is there anybody else who wants to? Because there's more I would want Bea to share too as well, but I want to see if you guys have specific questions about specific handbooks. Trustee Mercer.
Could you just remind us what the core bill that is prompting this is?
So the legislators went through and and adopted a few what we call, I guess, the parental rights bills, which put into place, I guess, solving problems that didn't necessarily exist. So for example, there is the parental rights bill that specifically states that with regard to transgender students, that we are not allowed to honor their preferred pronouns unless we have written parental consent. We are also required now to have parental permission for students to belong to any school clubs. They adopted a bill that said you can't have students who are of different genders sharing a hotel room unless there's parent knowledge of it. All of these are geared towards the transgender community. We know that. They can't say it out loud, though, because it's illegal to say it out loud. And they're couching it in the form of parental rights by saying that parents should have the right to to control essentially and make decisions for their children below the ages of 18. So we see more in those in those bills, but there's that core language of this, that parents have the fundamental rights to make decisions about education, medical, et cetera, and that the state has to have a compelling interest to infringe on those on those rights. We heard a lot of this similar argument during COVID with the masks, with the parents saying that Senate Bill 400, which was from the 2021 session, also deemed a parental rights bill, gave parents the rights to to make educational and medical decisions for their children, which we said, that's fine. The decision you're making is whether you send your kid to a public school or not, not picking and choosing which ones of our rules you want to follow at the time. And the District Court of Missoula agreed with us and said, yeah, that's that's exactly what that bill means. So then we get this year's bill. Yeah, so it's House Bill 676 and Senate Bill 518 are the two that are causing us the most grief. And unfortunately, because of those, we had to make changes to the handbook to say for students that want to be in clubs, we now are supposed to ask for and require a parent's sign off in order them for them to be in the club. If I had to guess, I think this came from all the stink about the Gay Straight Alliance Clubs that parents were saying, I don't want my kid in that club, and us saying, you know, if your kid wants to be in the club, it's sort of up to them. And with regard to the issue with the pronouns, it's interesting that they didn't do anything about preferred names, and we still honor student names, it's just a question of pronouns. They also made changes to our state harassment, human rights language, saying that it's not discrimination to refuse to call someone by their preferred pronoun. It's interesting, though, they also they did say, but it could be bullying. So what that every school basically did was say, okay, we're not gonna call it harassment, we're gonna call it bullying. You're still gonna do what we tell you to do with this. And it's it's us jumping through some hoops a little bit, but it it's intended to represent the beliefs of what is hopefully a minority of folks that that say, I don't want to respect the rights of transgender people. And that's that's not a spot that you want your staff to be in, frankly. It's not a position that we want to to say we espouse. It's a law in the state of Montana at this point. We don't like the law as a group, perhaps, and what the options are for us then is not to just say, we're not gonna follow it. But if someone who has standing, that means someone who is directly impacted by this law, were to challenge it by suing us, we're essentially a friendly defendant. And we say, yeah, we we don't like it either, but we don't know what option we have when the legislature passes a law like this.
Trustee Decker, then Trustee Witcher.
Thanks. I I'm glad that you talked a little bit about the the Senate and House bills around parent rights. Would you, if you can, talk a little bit about the issue of children's rights, youth rights and student rights, and maybe also what any current status of litigation around any of these changes might be in Montana or elsewhere, that similar stuff has been going on?
Well, I can tell you, yeah, Montana is unique in a sense that in our state constitution, we specifically say that minors have constitutional rights as well as adults. We don't limit our rights to adults in this state. So that would appear to open up a door for a a minor student, perhaps, to be a plaintiff to say, I believe this new law infringes on my rights. And I think if you if you look at the if you look at the where the federal guidance is with regard to this right now, I think that you're gonna find that there is a federal guidance leans towards accepting that that is probably an accurate statement. We know that the guidance that came out from the Biden administration has is on hold, on ice at the moment, but that's just students. We know that also the United States Supreme Court, with this particular court, which is considered probably the most conservative court we've had in in any of our lifetimes, issued a case called, it's called Bostock versus Clayton County, and it upheld the premise that it is illegal to discriminate against homosexual and transgender individuals in the context of employment. I personally find it hard to believe that they wouldn't extend that to to kids in schools, frankly. So to the extent that we have some of these laws that that might impact our employees, that's gonna be an an open door to a degree. But I think if you're focusing specifically on the students, they do have constitutional rights, and I think that is one of the avenues that that could be used to challenge potentially. Our obligation, though, as a district, I mean, this is hard, I mean, we're if you're at the point where you say, we don't agree with this law, we think this law violates the rights of others, we still have an obligation as a school district to recognize that it is the law. And if someone, if we follow it or we don't follow it, we're probably gonna get sued either way, to be honest. It's a question of whether we're a friendly defendant or a not-so-friendly defendant.
And with a friendly defendant, would come along injunction of the law?
Well, an option that would that someone could if someone were to file and argue that I think this if this law is implemented, it will immediately impact the civil rights of my child, the rights of and and will disenfranchise my child in the school system, ask the court to issue an injunction preventing the implementation of the law while we haggle out whether it's constitutional or not. If we don't object to that, it's a pretty darn good chance they're gonna get their injunction.
Trustee Witcher.
Everybody, thanks for doing me a solid and letting me zoom in from the East Coast. I just I just want to clarify and cite it on record. I know it's not my intention, and I have a feeling it's not the intention of the board to alienate a parent's right to be a part of their their child's education. I just want to make sure that we're vocalizing that, because I think when we talk about the clause "parents' rights," it can become tenuous. We're not, I think what we're trying to do is we're trying to protect students who need protecting by kind of divulging and diving into all of this. And I think at the end of the day, you know, in speaking for myself and in speaking for some colleagues, it's it's that safety and those kids who are who need us the most. And I think that that has kind of got us what where we are right now in making sure that we're taking care. I mean, we also pledged to make sure that we're taking care of the kids of our district. But I guess the one question that I have, Bea, thank you so much for explaining all that. We did pledge to follow state law, and we pledged to follow the Constitution, but what do we do when those contradict each other in kind of the way that you're talking right now? I I just am kind of confused, because that's kind of where where I'm landing at, is that we're in this really weird in-between. So we we don't have to approve the student handbook, is what you're saying as well, but it's an action item in the agenda? I'm just trying to unpack all this, if someone can explain it to me.
Yep, nope, so as chair, I recognize that this is an administration oversight. And so it we are gonna move it to information only, because this is administration oversight. But we, as we will get to the policies, and that's one thing we're gonna, we talked about with Superintendent Hill, is that the policies that impact this handbook, these changes, we are going to have them up right away in our next board meetings, because if you remember, Mike said we're gonna do them in chunks. So we're actually gonna move these policies up to just rip the Band-Aid off and go through those. So that's what those are. And I think one of the things is that these bills are othering, and someone who has been othered, I really do take this personal. And I think that I see what I see is I would want us to maintain our duties as elected officials and as board members to look at the information, and then once we do get to the policies, that's where we implement our stance, I feel like, if that's what it is. But we need to let the make sure that our staff are properly prepared with these handbooks to so that they're not in a rough spot when it comes to it, that they're protected. I think that's the big issue that I see, is that we want to make sure to staff that are have the handbooks that they are taking care of, so we can we can look at these, but then we could also put in a resolution stating our stance against these against this new laws, if that makes sense. Vice Chair Walker Andrews.
Yeah, it seemed to me that there were sort of two contradictory pieces. One was that sometimes the new state law flies in the face of a federal law, but then in one of the particular laws, it makes it pretty hard to to implement, because it says this is for parents' rights, and that the parents can say, this is my child's name, this is my child's preferred pronoun, and then it's comma, and nobody has to use these. So that seemed to say, you as a parent have a right, but we're gonna ignore your right anyway.
Yeah, I think you can you can definitely see where there's a lot of contradiction within these these bills, because particularly if a parent is saying, okay, it's my right to support my child's use of their preferred pronoun and name, so why would anyone else have the right to to ignore that? That's a compelling argument. And I think that we have to go back to 518, that that Senate bill that was passed. It actually requires the board to adopt policies that that outline what they call the parental rights. And so from those policies, we're supposed to have implementing procedures in the handbooks, and and it does leave us in kind of an odd spot. And I I don't disagree with you that there are contradictions throughout the way this was adopted and implemented. And it is causing it's wreaking havoc in the, you know, throughout Montana. It's not just Missoula struggling with this. It's all schools that are really saying, how do we do this? And at the same time, recognize that we're potentially disenfranchising portions of our population, which flies in the face of everything we say we're gonna do. But I go back to what are you guys' obligations? If there are ways to challenge these, there are ways to address what we think are inconsistencies in the law. Choosing not to follow the law, though, isn't one of those that I would say is a good option.
Vice Chair Hobbins.
So Bea, on that note, what what are the good options if we'd like to challenge this?
Good options are, one, we we as a board, I think, I think Malina is correct, you guys have never approved handbooks in the past, so I'm not sure why you'd start today. I think you would just table the item, let the administration do what they need to do as far as following that. When it gets to your policies, which you're gonna have to deal with here pretty quick, I think your board can talk through this as a board at the time, what does that policy look like? And then we can figure out from the policy perspective, since the statute does require you to adopt policies, does that give you standing then to challenge whether or not this is legal or not? The issue with the declaratory judgment is that you are a plaintiff in that case, which means you do not have insurance coverage, and so that's always somewhat of an issue of how much is this gonna cost? The alternative is educating our our members about what their rights are with regard to this, or our our students and their families. If you disagree with a provision of our handbook, because you believe that it violates your child's rights, you have standing to challenge that. But I would I'm very worried about trustees giving staff direction not to follow law, because that impacts in their licensure for in the state of Montana, and it does open you guys up to recall.
Trustee Decker.
While I do understand what you're saying, I am concerned that adopting a policy that we, you know, are also in this moment discussing the idea of like a resolution, like that says that we don't agree with it. The the very idea of adopting a policy because of that law sends a message to students and parents about what this school district stands for that I find really like deeply wrong and chilling, and and the message that it sends to staff about what is okay. And I think that the harm will have been done, we will have done harm to students who who will not participate in activities, will not be their whole selves at school, something that's already so challenging for students to do. I just I I do understand that it is not where we want to be to be telling anyone not to follow the law, because that is putting people, we are all between a rock and a hard place and trying to do the right thing, given the the seats that we find ourselves in and in a fairly impossible situation. If I guess if we're going to table the handbooks, I'm wondering if we might not deal with these policies until sometime as we know, like how things are playing out a little bit.
The the difficulty with that, and I hear what you're saying, is that if we don't adopt the policy, then no one has the ability to challenge our policy. I know that sounds ridiculous. This is, again, this is going on across the country. There we're not the only state to have adopted a rule like this, and because these are all brand-new laws, there haven't been legal challenges to them yet. But there have been plenty of legal challenges to districts that have rules that say kids can use their preferred pronouns, and we do that without parental consent. And courts have upheld the the rights of the kids in those cases. So I do see that there is a path for addressing whether this is actually a legal exercise of our of our of the authority of our legislature in this state. The question is, who has standing to do it? If we don't if we don't, I don't say adopt the law, but if we don't give them the avenue to to do it, they there's no basis to challenge. They won't have standing to challenge, because we don't have that rule. On the flip side, we could get sued by someone saying, you're supposed to have a policy in place. Senate Bill 518 requires this district to adopt a policy. You chose not to adopt the policy. That's not gonna give someone standing to challenge the the law. Then it's a question of, we're violating a directive from the state of Montana. Then we become the issue, not necessarily the underlying law.
So and we're not at the we're not adopting a policy yet, but I do want us to, I'll have to talk with Superintendent Hill, but I would want that to come up sooner than later. We do have it further down the timeline, but I'd rather have it move it up so that we can, if that makes sense. Trustee Mercer.
So my main thought, I guess, kind of going to what counsel's talking about, though, is that would it not help that? So my my complaint is being forced us to say things that we might not believe in. And 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 so it is maybe a quibble, but words matter to me, that if these say, or even the policies say, to the extent required by Senate Bill 518, we do this. To make it clear to our community, and I wish maybe we'd stand up louder, but to the kids that are wondering why this is happening to them, that the direction be pointed to where that came from. And I don't see how that could hurt our cause to say, the only reason we adopted this is we felt we were mandated by this statute. We made no independent judgment under our supervision authority that we thought this was a good thing to do. And to me, it's some version of saying, again, to the extent required by or whatever. And then also, if legislate, you know, when and if litigation was successful, then the how the handbook would be sort of automatically fixed, because it would be to the extent that that's a valid law and is no longer is, so.
I don't have a problem with putting in limiting language of, to the extent required by law, the district will blah, 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 blah. That's fine. What I don't think we can do is put a whole page in there saying, we think these laws stink, and we don't want to follow them, and blah, because then then we're sending a message to everyone else, don't follow the rest of our rules either. But I think limiting language is okay, to the to the extent we are obligated by Montana law to to recognize these issues, here they are.
Trustee Mercer, then Vice Chair Walker Andrews.
So this is sideways, so maybe. The school clubs, are there options for assembly and community that are not covered by this? Are there things that students can gather and do? What do you lose if you're not a school club? What?
Okay, so that's that's a really good question. So we have two different kinds of school clubs. There's curricular clubs, so things like key club, and then you have non-curriculars. So we have, you know, a quilting club, we have a Dungeons and Dragons club, we have a Gay Straight Alliance club. What that allows them to do generally is to meet on school property during school time. There is a federal law, secondary, I can't remember the entire name of it, but it has to do with secondary school, so high school clubs. And what it specifically says is that those clubs, the non-curricular clubs, are student-led, student-driven, they might have a staff advisor, but that person's job is not to regularly lead the meeting, control the meeting, they're just there to make sure you don't burn the place down, essentially. And but all of those, because we allow them to meet on school property during the instructional day, become school clubs. You could easily be a club that doesn't meet during the instructional day, fills out a facility use agreement like everybody else, and they could meet after school. We have no control over that. That could be any kind of club they want, and then we don't need permission from parents to do that. That's up to the to the student and their parents, how they shake that out.
Is the process for that spelled out in the handbook?
To the extent of organizing a a club that is gonna be a student club, probably yes. On the flip side, no, because we don't control that. We don't have anything that, you know, we have, there are groups that have nothing to do with the school that that sometimes use us to get information out. For a long time, ski club was like that here. It was just ski club was just what a bunch of kids who liked to ski do, and they all talked about at school. They used the bulletin board to communicate, which was totally fine, but they weren't recognized by the school, and they weren't an official school group.
I get your point that we're not supposed to set a model that we don't obey laws, but but I do wonder, when a law is passed that say is based on completely incorrect premises, so the world is flat, we're gonna decide that, and we pass a law that say students can't wear rollerblades to come to school because they won't be able to stop in time because the world is flat or something. At what point can you say the the entire premise of this law is incorrect, and therefore no one should obey this law?
We can say that, but it's the it's the method of how we're saying it that that comes down to it. So there are legal ways to challenge it in court and through the state. What we don't get to do, you guys don't get to do, as publicly elected officials that took an oath to uphold the law, is to, again, decide which of the laws, I agree, this is sounds an awful lot like the world is flat type of law. There are people on the other side of it, though, who 100% believe that it is necessary, accurate, et cetera. We look at things very, very different, which is why the law doesn't contemplate people just being able to say, I don't fundamentally agree with this, so I'm not gonna follow it. We've got to decide if we want to challenge it, what is the best way to challenge it, and is the board willing to go down that road?
Trustee Mercer.
Switching topics again, sort of, does the constitutional provision about supervision and control of schools in each district shall be vested in the Board of Trustees? Does that have any, has that ever been interpreted? Does it have any clear meaning?
Yeah, I mean, we certainly, we threw that out there during COVID, for sure, and argued that there are, we understand that the legislature does have the ability to to pass laws that impact schools. We know that, because Title 20 exists, it's the all the implementing statutes in our state. The question is, at what point do they cross that line? And in this case, have they crossed a line by by usurping our authority under the constitution? the Constitution while trying to exert theirs? And that would be an argument to make for a judge. There are other laws in the state of Montana that, that impact students. We have a huge disciplinary code. We have a code that impacts what trustees can do. So we would need to demonstrate that, that somehow this infringed on the trustee's rights to make rules, and that, that's going to be a much harder battle than, uh, a parent or student challenging the law, saying this directly impacts me and it's unconstitutional.
Trustee Decker?
Believe me, I am the last person to ever curtail our discussions as a board because I learned so much from all of you and I also really enjoy this part. I am, want, just noticing the time and wondering when we want to make a movement to let folks speak, just a suggestion.
Yep, nope, I've been watching. Anything from trustee Afghariz or Vogel? Just want to make sure everybody had an opportunity. Trustee Afghariz.
Semant-, semantics may be a question, I mean, semantics probably isn't the right word. Some laws are put in place and given implementation period? Is that, is it in a, are there these laws that took immediate effect, or is there a period that we have to implement?
Um, these particular laws became effective on July 1st.
Any final points by any trustees, final comments? Trustee Decker?
Sorry, I'm just really grateful, um, to you, be a, um, to administration for, um, supporting this effort to have deeper conversation. Um, I, my heart goes out to folks who are feeling worried about this, both staff and students. And I am grateful for this board and the thoughtful way that we're tackling a really complicated issue, is what I would say.
Yep, nope, and that, that would be my final comment, too. So thank the administration and council for their guidance on this. And I do want to say that the board do support all of our students and that we do keep everything, especially someone like myself who has been othered. This is really important to me, to make sure that we do not do that to others as well. Or others, othering, um, just know that we are here to support our students. So I'll go ahead and take public comment on item four, student handbooks. Is there any public comment?
There is. First up is Max Burnt. Please say and spell your name into the microphone.
Got it? All right, my name is Max Burnt, my pronouns are they/them. My name is spelled M-A-X-B-E-R-N-D-T. Thank you. Had this whole big thing about why you should care, but it's obvious that you guys do, so good on you guys. Um, my name is Max Burnt, I'm a president of my high school's GSA, Gender Sexuality Alliance. Since my group have attended to discover a community different from their own growing up, and parents should not get to choose what their child learns. And I feel that it's obvious that you guys feel that your hands are tied, and this should be a example of why you should protect our school's organizations proactively with these meetings outside of school. I feel that a lot of our GSAs or other programs that are going to be attended by students or have to be moved to, and amended to be attended by students who need it the most, these kids whose parents would object to being in those groups, these kids who want to discover a community and a life outside of the ones that they were taught. I feel that these communities should be protected by you guys, and you guys should definitely be thinking about how to get around this, which you are, and I'm grateful that you are, and thank you.
Hello, I'm Sarah Burnt, S-A-R-A-B-E-R-N-D-T, mother of Max. And, um, the number one thing I wanted to speak out about this is just as a parent, I've all, I'm also a former educator, I'm a former para educator for about 10 years at Big Sky, and I'm no longer in the school system, and I'm also the parent of a child who needed GSA, and who GSA also needed. And I want to speak to my child when they were in middle school and they were first coming out and questioning. They were questioning their, their, um, sexuality, they were questioning their gender identity. They needed a community of people to talk to. Initially, when kids are coming out, they aren't ready to talk to the grownups about these things yet. They have to spitball things off their peers, that's where these things start, and allowing them the space for community is essential for that. When my child came out to me as non-binary and asked about changing their name, it was a very emotionally fraught, um, thing for my kiddo to go through, and it was an emotionally fraught thing for me to feel as a parent. My child was rejecting the very first gift I gave them, their name, and yet that was the right choice, and that was what needed to happen. And initially, I wasn't on board, and that's the biggest thing I want to say to you. As a parent who was upset that my kid was talking to their counselor about changing their name, and I wasn't included initially, I had to remember that I am not the center of my child's education, my child is. Um, my child's identity and my child's self-worth was what was most important, not my feelings. And it actually was handled very gracefully. I feel like I was respected and talked to despite my feelings of initially being upset after discussing with the school counselor what was going on, and after having that perspective of understanding that my kiddo did get to come home and still be loved, but not every kid does. And that's a moment of privilege because I realized that just because my feelings were hurt, my kid at least knew that they were still going to come home and have a place to live, and have a family who loved them and accepted them for who they were. And for those kids out there who are scared, they're scared because they're reaching out to a world that's heteronormative currently. And so even in an accepting families, there's fear. Even in accepting families, there's that trepidation. And how much more is there for those kiddos who don't have accepting families and they know it? And they don't have a community to turn to. And also, just one last thing I want to throw out as a former educator, asking educators who are the monitors of these clubs to require signed documents from parents before the kids are allowed to stay in those meetings is a lot to ask. We have parents that are overburdened with work and other expectations, I'll let it go there, but it's just very, very difficult and a high bar. Thank you.
Next is Zeke Cork.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak, and I'm actually floored by everything I've heard. I came in guns ablazin'.
I'm sorry to interrupt, could you please stay, say, and spell your name?
I'm sorry, I'm Zeke Cork, Z-E-K-E-C-O-R-K. And I grew up here in Missoula. I attended public schools before there was anything even known as a middle school. I graduated from Roosevelt and Hellgate High. Both of my parents were teachers, and my uncle was a principal at Wa-, my great uncle was a principal at Washington for years. I have deep respect for Missoula County Public School System. I come here tonight as a representative of the Board of Directors for the Western Montana LGBTQ+ Community Center to address the proposed changes, as we all know, specifically the parent guardian, uh, permission, uh, for the child to participate in, uh, a school club or extracurricular activity. And that would be fine in a perfect world where parents see their children for who they are and not who they wish them to be. I understand that the changes are the result of legislation, legislative action that was taken last spring. I spent a lot of time in Helena. When the slew of bills directly targeting our community were unleashed state and nationwide, it seems like our darkest chapters of history are repeating themselves as if we have learned nothing from them. And I have lots of statistics, but the Trevor Project reports that 41% of LGBTQ+ youth seriously considered attempting suicide in the past year. Fewer than 40% found their home to be affirming, and nearly one in three said that their mental health was poor most of the time or always due to the anti-LGBTQ+ policies and legislation. And a new report from the Human Rights Campaign reveals that 46.1% of young people in the U.S. feel unsafe in school, while trans and gender expansive youth are even more likely to feel unsafe at school, with the figure rising to 55%. This report actually found that 57.4% of those polled reported experiencing at least one form of parental rejection. And I find these numbers staggering. These are student-run organizations specifically aimed at uniting LGBTQ+ and allied youth to build community and organize around the issues that affect them. It's a safe space. Research shows that these groups have an enduring impact on students' health, wellness, and academic performance. These clubs didn't exist when I came out in the seventies. My friends and I had to stumble around for years to find ourselves in community. I'm actually in awe of these kids. They're our future, and I would like to see us empower them to be fearless and kind. Every day, they teach us how to do things better, how to change the things that don't work, and stop repeating the actions and behaviors that no longer serve us. And I wonder why we would want to stand in their way. The fact is, these laws and policies will not stop someone from being LGBTQ+. We are who we are. But these laws and policies can make life extremely difficult for someone in a non-supportive environment and drive them to despair, feeling hopeless, unwanted, shamed, and unloved, ultimately can cause them to resort to self-harm or suicide. You have the opportunity to support them, lift them up, believe them when they tell you who they are, and watch them grow right before your eyes. And I ask you to be leaders, set the example for others, do the right thing, and do not implement this rule change without exploring options. Thank you for your time.
Hello, and thank you for, um, having this conversation and making it open to the public. Uh, my name is Katherine McMahon, K-A-T-H-R-Y-N-M-A-C-M-A-H-O-N. My pronouns are she, they. Um, I have a lot to say. Uh, I'm a social work student and I have been out as queer for almost 25 years and worked in education, uh, not, though not in Montana. And I know on a personal level the impact of gay and other queer communities. But what I'm going to tell you about is how, as a school system, it is, it is detrimental to interrupt not just any child's identity development, but specifically marginalized kids. We've known since the 1980s that LGBTQ youth have higher rates of truancy, are less likely to finish school, and we also know now in more recent decades that school engagement is directly tied to GPA performance. And, uh, GSA is definitely impact school engagement and increase that as well as GPA performance. And it is not in the interests of this school system or any other to make it more difficult for marginalized students to access school engagement activities. There have been studies that show that when LGBTQ youth do not feel bullied or victimized at school or in their homes, their average GPA is 3.3, but once that begins, it drops to an average of 2.8. That is a significant drop, and it is not in the interest of any educational system to make education less effective, basically. So I would like you to consider what you can do with the arguments, that you will actually be making your school system, uh, less effective, that you will have higher rates of truancy, that you will have fewer children graduating from high school, that you will have, uh, higher rates of STDs in high school, that you will have even higher rates of pregnancy because we know that, um, children are more prone to experiment when they feel pressured to go the other direction. But as well as that, you're not going to have as many students, uh, you know, feeling safe at school, you're not going to be having as many students feeling like they can learn and that they can trust the school, and you're teaching them that school's not a good place for them. Um, in addition to that, um, well, I think I've probably said enough. Thank you very much.
Next is Izzy Milch.
Hi, my name is Izzy Milch, that's I-Z-Z-Y-M-I-L-C-H, and my pronouns are they/them. Uh, I'm an MCPS grad, and, um, yeah, I also was expecting to have to fight a lot harder to get you to listen, but it sounds like we're all on the same page, so that's always exciting. Um, any policy changes that are going to affect students' ability to learn need to be really carefully considered, and it's clear that you all understand that. I know this is a really hard position that you're in, and you clearly share a lot of my concerns, so, again, appreciate your thoughtfulness. But as was voiced earlier, the fact that these handbook changes are being proposed before there are policies to enforce them is really concerning to me. The kids don't know how they're going to enforce these policies, and all they're going to see is these handbooks that make it clear that their lives are about to get harder. I think everyone in this room can tell that your intentions are nothing but good, but they don't know that. Um, they can just see what's written, and so I hope that what's written has a lot of thought behind it. Um, yeah, I'm hopeful that the board can, can find a way to craft policies that will prioritize the well-being of all of your students, even if that does mean running a file of state law. I think there are a lot of times when people have had to figure out what to do when the law that they are tasked with enforcing is not just, and I hope that we can learn from them here. Really grateful to all of you, so thanks.
Next is Jess Monis Hernandez.
Hello, my name is Jess Monis Hernandez, um, J-E-S-S-M-O-N-I-S hyphen H-E-R-N-A-N-D-E-Z. I'll thank my parents for a hyphenated name. Um, I guess I'd like to share a little bit about myself professionally and then personally, just to help, uh, lower your perception and increase your reality. So I work with Empower Montana, we, or I'm a youth engagement specialist. I work closely with Max, who's an incredible high schooler, um, who I'm learning, and yeah, just have the best time getting to know. Um, I'd like to uplift their voice, and I'm also an MSW student, so pursuing a lot of this work professionally, I've worked with youth and schools for many, many years. And I just caught wind of this meeting pretty last minute, so I more so just came to listen and be part of the discussion. Um, it sounds like we're still gonna speak a lot about it, and I appreciate your time to listen. So a few things, um, that have already been kind of said, I think without thinking about the policies that will follow all of this is important. Um, thinking about any marginalized group and the misinformation, malinformation, disinformation that's out there, um, was what created these state laws, and then you take that through institutions and policies, and you're, it's perpetrating the oppression of certain groups. So in this case, LGBTQ+ youth or trans youth. And what will happen will be, um, just further internalization of homophobia, and then on the outcome of that is true harm. So whether that's within themselves or other students who, whose brains are still developing, they don't know any better, there's a lot of bullying, harassing, that could happen. And then that's where I'll take my personal story. Um, I'm, my pronouns are she/her, I'm a cisgender woman, I think all of these things are relevant. Um, I'm bisexual, and I remember so much bullying in high school. Yeah, there was no safe space, there was a lot of, um, messages that were coming from the school that I went to that was, um, the teachers, educators, just a lot of misinformation, and then the internalization that happened. So as I get older, I just want to be a voice and advocate for those youth. Thank you.
Next is Gwen Nicholson.
Hello, my name is Gwen Nicholson, G-W-E-N-N-I-C-H-O-L-S-O-N, pronouns are she/her. I just want to say upfront, uh, I'm really respectful of the conversation that's happened so far in this room, it's been really wonderful and constructive. I'm also really appreciative of the situation that you find yourselves in, you're in a landmine of contradictions, and that's not easy to navigate at all, so respect to that. kind of stakes that are at play here as you go about drafting these policies, and that it might also kind of provide some guidance on that matter. So I am a graduate of an MCPS school. I graduated from Helgate High School in 2016, and during that time, I was fully aware that I'm transgender. And I was unfortunately in a situation where I had to be deeply closeted, because I came from a home environment where that was explicitly known, it was made explicitly clear to me that that was not okay. And that caused me an extreme amount of mental anguish and distress. I would cut class to cry in bathrooms all the time. My grades suffered, my relationship with peers and friends and my family and educators suffered. It was a deeply, deeply painful experience, and it led me to a lot of destructive habits, including self-harm, and it ultimately culminated in a suicide attempt in my junior year of high school. And I know that if I had been in a more supportive and loving environment, there's a definite chance that I might have not caused myself that kind of harm and that I could have been spared a lot of pain. Conversely, I think if I had been in an environment more similar today, one that's more suffused with fear and paranoia, where it was made explicitly clear to me that I couldn't trust personal information with any trusted adult whatsoever, because they had an obligation to inform my parents, who would not have taken that news well at all at that time, I think it would have been a lot worse. And there's a good chance that I might not be here today to speak to all of you, because I would be dead. It was probably the worst period of time in my life, and I don't want anybody else to have to suffer through that. So please just keep that in mind as you go forward with these things. Please have an eye towards harm reduction and mitigation, because this is not just a debate, and it's not just about respect, although it is about respect, you know? It's about, you know, showing respect for these children as they're coming up and growing up and exploring themselves, but also, in a very, very real sense, this is about the lives of children and keeping people alive. So please, please keep that in mind. Thank you.
Next is Rachel Nordhagen.
My name is Rachel Nordhagen, R-A-C-H-E-L-N-O-R-D-H-A-G-E-N. Pronouns are she/her. I am coming today as a parent of a kid with an MCPS. You guys have seemed a lot more open to what we're coming to say to you than I was expecting, so thank you for that. We do like to believe that everyone has a happy and healthy home life with supportive parents or caregivers, but the fact is that simply is not the case. Kids and teenagers have a right to basic autonomy. They are people, and they are not just a group that needs to be controlled. There's no positive in making access to school social groups harder. That will only keep children away from community that they desperately need. Approving something like this within the school handbook or as a rule will only keep people out of this community and will hurt those that are struggling the most. If there is any possible hoop to jump through to keep this from happening, please consider it. It seems as though you are. If it comes to it, we will take action as parents against this. It seems as though you are also aware of that, but just want to reiterate, there is intention behind that. We would like our children to maintain their autonomy in every possible way that we can, and we ask that you consider that, and please do the same.
Next is Chloé RunsBehind.
Hi, everybody. My name is Chloé RunsBehind, C-H-L-O-E-R-U-N-S-B-E-H-I-N-D. My pronouns are they/them. And yeah, just to reiterate what everyone's saying, it's very refreshing to be in a room of decision-makers who actually have some sense. So with that in mind, I wrote out a thing. I'll probably skip over some sentences, because y'all seem very sympathetic. But yeah, we've all acknowledged that we're in a really tricky situation with this new law, the Family Education Rights and Privacy Act, which despite having the word "rights" in the title diminishes the rights of students in many very concerning ways. But also, I really felt like it was important to bring up the fact that this new legislation does not specifically instruct trustees to make handbook changes, which, as we are discussing tonight, it specifically requires procedures to be developed regarding those changes. And as far as I know now, and maybe this could be cleared up at an informational meeting, and based on the handbook changes, as I read them, such procedures have not yet been developed. And it's concerning to me that this board would publish and distribute information that alludes to currently nonexistent procedures and policies. Another point was brought up earlier of that, and maybe this wasn't the point, but it got me thinking, like, what would happen if these policies were to be challenged, and then there's an injunction on the law, and then your handbooks are incorrect or spreading false information? So I'm, and then if procedures have not yet been developed, are you prepared to enter a new school year determining the rules around excused absences, extracurricular attendance, nicknames and chosen names, and pronouns on a case-by-case basis? And are you prepared to accept the injustice and inconsistencies in educational quality that this case-by-case method will certainly produce? And while I don't agree with the changes that are being required at a state level, as it seems like you all agree with as well, if these changes are to be implemented within the Missoula County Public School System, I urge you to take the time to do what our legislators didn't do when they were voting for this law. You know, I really, really hope that you will please place the best interests of students as your top priority when developing procedures to comply with this piece of legislation. And I don't know what the exact procedure is, but if it's possible to wait to make handbook changes until you've taken the time to develop thoughtful procedures, I feel like that would be a more rational course of action. And yeah, it seems like we all understand that this is not a simple matter of handbook or policy change. You've been placed in a position to choose between either following a really unfortunate and poorly constructed law, but then in doing so violating children's constitutional rights, or you could uphold children's constitutionally protected rights but risk the legal consequences of doing so under this adultist law. Yeah, and some of the law that we're being forced to comply with or that you are being forced to comply with views children as property. This law treats two-spirit, transgender, and queer students as objects with no agency to choose how they're referred to. And I know that's not what you believe in. I know that you see students as children, as people, and I know that you're smart enough and creative enough to find ways to treat them as such. From just listening to this meeting for a bit, I do also have some questions maybe for y'all to ponder, but I guess I'm curious, what is their harm in not making these changes in the handbook if, as has been suggested earlier in the meeting, that you might be educating families and students of their rights using other methods besides the handbook? And also, I'm curious if disciplinary action will be taken against students who obtain signatures from people who might be their legal guardians? And yeah, thank you.
Have we missed anybody?
All right, the time is now six o'clock, and we'll adjourn for 10 minutes, and regular school board meeting will start at 6:10. Thank you. Rule call has been taken, and we'll go ahead and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, so now we'll move on to item three, which is to review, revise, and approve the agenda. And I move, can I do it as chair? Move that we, without objection, I would like to approve tonight's agenda item, agenda in table item 6A1. Any objections to table in that item? Is there a motion? Was that my motion? All right, no objection?
So let me approve the agenda with that change.
Yes, a motion to approve the agenda with that change. Move by trustee Decker, second by vice chair Walker Andrews. Any public comment? All those in favor for that motion, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all trustees present, agenda approved. And now we're on to item four, which is public comment. The public comment portion of the meeting is set aside for the public to address the board as the body. It is not time for board response or for the public to ask questions. Do not infringe on right of privacy of others. Please sign in and spell your first and last name. Comments are limited to three minutes per speaker. The chair may interrupt or terminate an individual speaker. Is there any public comment?
Hello. Casey Ballou, K-A capital C, two spawes, B-A-L-L-O-U, middle school teacher, president of the Missoula Education Association, for those of you with a short memory. I just wanted to celebrate that today we had our first day of new hire orientation. We've got a great group. There were 41 new hires in attendance today out of about our 60 new hires total, and we've got a great group that's got some experience for the most part. So choosing to come to MCPS from other spots is a good sign for us. Our new faculty program did a great job leading through along with the instructional coaches, and they'll support them throughout the year. And that effort to retain staff is one of our secret weapons in educator shortage times. I did want to highlight too, this is the brag moment, the NEA Today magazine that goes out to the 3 million NEA members in the world actually has a little piece on mentoring, and Missoula is the focus of the majority of the article. So I found this on my desk yesterday. I haven't had a chance to scan it in, but I'm happy to send a copy to you all, because it's something to celebrate. We're kind of a big darn deal right now, so yes. I also want to thank you guys for being a great elected board, serving our community.
Any other public comment? CNN, now we'll move on to item five, which is reports and announcements. And first up is superintendent Hill.
Good evening, trustees. Not a whole lot new to report, just that we are literally days away from kicking off the start of the school year. All preparations are fully underway, if not completed, for opening our schools and welcoming students. Casey mentioned that we had new teacher orientation today. I actually sat in the audience with them for a moment and introduced myself as a new member of the district as well, so it was exciting to see. We've been having administrator workshops the last couple of weeks, bringing our admin team up to speed on all things new in MCPS, and we're just excited. Trevor and his team have been having hiring fairs, and we are hiring people and getting positions filled, so feeling really optimistic about the start of the school year.
Okay, on to item seven, which is new business. And first up is finance, operation, and maintenance. Adopt 2023-2024 elementary budget. Over to you, Mr. McHugh.
All right, thank you, and thank you all for being here. The first item I want to talk about is just the little twist. The Department of Revenue notified us today and this afternoon that they had some minor changes to their tax valuation numbers, so we had to do a quick update. So I'm going to start with the agenda item itself, and of course, tonight is the night for the board to adopt budgets for our budgeted funds and to set levies to support those budgeted funds. If you look at the background that's provided, I provide a little bit of detail and data. On the elementary side, some of the first focus is just on our A and B and our enrollment decline that we've experienced since COVID. And I think I showed the October enrollment count drop, K6, 312 students, and then 45 in grade seven and eight. If you just use, you know, a rounded A and B number of $6,500, that's about 2.3 million of really budget authority reduction. Jump into the next paragraph, there's some data points that I just want to correct with the new tax valuations. The first one is when we reference the general fund levy increase by 900,000. It's, as you'll see as we go through this packet, it's 895,000. That's the levy increase. 261 of that was voted, and 684,000 of that is the base levy increase. We talked a little bit last time about the fact that the tax valuation has an impact on our guaranteed tax-based subsidy, and so our subsidy from the state went down. That has the effect of increasing our base levy. They work opposite each other. So then, the base levy increased by 684,000. That's because of that guaranteed tax-based subsidy from the state decreased by 484,000. So those are the changes there. The last sentence, second to last sentence, total tax value of the elementary district increased by 34.4 million, not 34.8. This results in a total mill decrease of 18.38, and then a tax reduction or a tax assessment decrease is 24.81 rather than 25.33. And even though we're talking elementary first, the high school background, really not much of a change there, other than the end of the agenda item it references. The decrease in mills of 12.5 is actually 12.6, and then the tax increase was 69.1 million instead of 71.1, and then the tax decrease is 16.42 instead of 16.86. So just wanted to highlight those changes to the background. If you jump to page five, and I'm going to kind of bounce around since we have our handbook attachments and then the updated attachments, which I put at your desk, you'll see the new attachments everybody got. So that's the new documents that are attached, and Tyler and Brian are throwing them up on the screen. So on page five, the only, this is our budget adoption motion for the elementary. It identifies all the budgeted funds and the amount of the levy associated with those budgeted funds. So unlike last week, when we looked at the, when we only showed the general fund and then prior year budget and levy amounts, we filled all that information in. We'll take a closer look at what those numbers mean. The general fund levy amount is 13,794,153. It's not that 13,803, which, again, this was impacted by Department of Revenue changes. That local levy represents 31.9%. So that's the motion. You'll see the last sentence of the motion, the board voted unanimously in favor, which we're predicting, but that can change, of course, subject to adjustments to line items of the general fund budget. So we're not looking at adjusting line item budgets, we're looking at adopting the general fund budget, all of the budgets and their levy amounts. Jumping to page seven, this is some detail that you didn't have last time that really has the nuts and bolts. We like to show what happened in FY23, which is up above, and then where it looks at at FY24. The general fund, as you all know, we adopt budgets based upon A and B, student number counts. The school funding formula dictates how much of that budget, if we adopt max budget, has to be voted, and our voters thankfully approved our $261,000 levy. And so you'll see there again, the levy amount increase is 13,794,153. And you can also see the mill decrease is 12.07, really highlighted by the large increase in tax valuation. Transportation fund is also a large levy increase, and part of this relates to what we did at the end of the year as a board. We asked you to approve a budget amendment, a pretty sizable one of over 300,000. That pretty much consumed all of our reserves. So we're doing a couple of things. One is to adopt a budget and an associated levy amount that reflects actual expected expenditures. We were low when we adopted budgets in FY23. And then to try and build up those reserves. So that's what we're trying to do there with that levy increase. Other items of note, the tuition fund is excess special ed costs. Adult ed is, we're adopting- Adult ed is, we're adopting prior year budgets in both the elementary and the high school. And there's actually a reduction in the levy request because we're reappropriating some budget that was left over. The tech fund, there's no levy increase. It's continuing with the vote, the approved levy of eight hundred and fifty thousand. Debt service, there's an increase in the levy, and it's not really because the amount of the debt service payment changes. It really has to do with some state GTB payments that we get. So we have bond funds, and as a result, after you adopt budgets, the state's going to provide a share of state set-aside funds. We don't know what that amount is, so we don't budget it. But what happened in two thousand and twenty-two, that payment from the state was two hundred and sixty thousand. Usually it's in twenty-one is a hundred and thirty thousand, twenty-three is a hundred and twenty-four. So we had quite a bit of funds to reappropriate in FY twenty-three. So that's why we had a bit of a bump in the debt service levy amount. And we'll know later how much of the GTB we get, but it's not going to change the amount of the levy. What's written there is what we'll levy. And the building reserve, the seven hundred thousand increase is directly related to our, the voted levy for a billing reserve support. This is the real detail that supports the motion that we looked at initially. I'll jump ahead to page nine, which is a graph that we share with the board. It's on our website, and a number of graphs are on the website that we didn't include in the packet. But, you know, the school district funding, you can really sort of see how it works by looking at the mills. I mean, our mills bounce around. They're not flat. They go up, they go down, and right now they're in a trajectory of going down. And certainly this year, it's tax valuation based. I just sort of did a goofy exercise. I took the elementary mills in two thousand and eight were a hundred and thirty-six point six five for all of our budgeted funds other than the general fund. If that amount remained flat through two thousand and twenty-four, our revenue increase would be over two million dollars. But we don't adopt budgets based upon flat mills. It was just sort of a goofy exercise to look at, and very much different for school funding. The next item to jump to is on page ten. I'm not going to go into a lot of detail here. We looked at this last week. Really, the main thing to point out is with the general fund, we're adopting max budgets in the elementary and the high school, which involve devoted levies. They weren't huge, but we are very thankful that they were approved. We also are making progress, and it maybe doesn't look like it, but we are. If you look at the elementary, the progress we're making is pulling away from ESER, and we have to. The expenditure deadline for all ESER funds is September of two thousand and twenty-four. ESER two have to be expended September of two thousand and twenty-three, which they will be. So we're on the final availability of ESER funds. The elementary, you'll see, we relied upon one point seven five million in our general fund or to support general fund expenses. Going into two thousand and twenty-four, we're estimating the reliance at three hundred and fifty-five thousand. And that just is good news for FY twenty-five planning. We're not trying to figure out how to cover one point five million is kind of what we had talked about earlier with our budget committee. The high school is more, it's a little higher. But overall, I mean, we were looking at over three million for FY twenty-three, and between the two districts, we're a million four. So it's a better spot to be in overall. The elementary offsets that you see at the bottom, these are moves really to inject funding sources in the elementary to bring those positions that were funded with ESER into the general fund. And that's what we're doing. That's what's represented here. Jumping to page eleven, this was, I can't blame this spreadsheet on the Department of Revenue, but it's, this was dead on when we sent it out, but this is like the wrong spreadsheet for the revenue funds, our revenue support for the general fund. It doesn't even total the total amount of our revenue for the two thousand and twenty-four budget. But you have a new one in your packet. So you can see that the two primary changes was just under the base levy and the overbait, or sorry, the base levy and the GTB funding. And that's where you can see the state subsidy went down. That's that four sixty, four eighty-three. And then that has an effect of increasing our base levy locally, that's by six eighty. So that's really something that you can tie to the tax value increase in our community relative to tax value increases among the other communities around the state. So we're receiving less of a subsidy as a result of the growth in our tax base. And finally, I'm going to jump back to one last item for the elementary. Sorry to bounce around, but, and this is on page eight. And I really don't want to spend a lot of time on this. It's really a sample. There's, this is an initial draft. There's a number of mistakes or things that need to be evaluated in greater detail when we finalize our expenditures for the year. But really what we're incorporating and what we want the board to look at is your regular quarterly report of the general fund and look at it from a FY twenty-three to FY twenty-four standpoint. And, you know, the one expenditure that really plays this out pretty well is under utilities. And so the utility increase is really capturing what we've seen over the last number of years where expenditures are growing. And this category captures a decrease in gas budget because of expenditures. We've paid less for gas than we've budgeted, but a growth for electricity, a growth for water sewer, growth for disposal. And some of those variances have been in play for quite a while. We're just trying to, let's capture what we really expend. And a lot of times we rely upon the knowledge that, A, utilities, we budgeted more than we typically expend. That's a good place to put budget. You don't want to find out that you're over expended for utilities. It's also a place that you can pick up added staffing obligations. So, you know, the, when we refine this document and work through the budget committee, then what you'll, what you'll see, and you still see here, is certified salaries is growing, and it's really building those positions that were ESER funded into the general fund. And that's what we're trying to do here. You know, we know that we didn't reduce clerical secretary. So you see that negative. That's an internal service fund adjustment. So that's sort of why I don't want to climb into this document, really. And it's more informational. It's not related to the budget or the levy, but I did talk to the board about sharing this. And that's it for the elementary. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any trustee questions? Trustee Decker?
Thanks. I'm curious about some of the positions that are moving out of ESER funding and into the general fund, and whether any of those might have been built into the community schools grant or any other of the grants that we saw last time, and then what that does. Because it's, it's sort of tricky when something's in the general fund and how those positions either do carry forward or don't. I know we've kind of flagged the issue of these grant-funded positions being challenging to maintain. And if we're going to be able to cover some of them with grant funding, I know we don't know yet, but I just want to ask if that's part of a plan to keep those funded.
No, and thanks for asking the question because the ESER build into the general fund are really those positions that we subsidized with ESER. They're classroom positions. They're not ESER-focused positions. So when the ESER guidance came out, it was to the extent practicable, you maintain positions. And we immediately didn't run a levy in the elementary district, and we immediately maintained all staff. And so what it really reflects is a staff or accreditation. These are classroom, boots-on-the-ground sort of staffing positions that we know we have to cover in the general fund. The other look at other grant-funded positions, I mean, I think, you know, that's, that's not these positions that we know we need to have to meet accreditation.
Any other trustee questions? Seeing none. I don't think Meg does. Is there an elementary motion to approve the recommendation to approve the elementary budget? Moved by vice chair Hobbin, second by trustee of Garris. Any final trustee comments? Any public comments? All trustees, elementary trustees in favor for approving the recommendation? Please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all elementary trustees present. Now we'll move on to topic two, which is to adopt the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four high school budget. And again, back to you, Mr. McHugh.
All right, thank you, and I'll just restate those minor changes to the background on the high school side and then direct the board to page twelve, which is the budget adoption motion for the high school. Like the elementary, there's a minor modification to the levy amount. And here, the levy amount will go to eleven million, seven forty-seven, oh seventy-two. I just want to confirm that. Yeah, so that's on the new information and what's displayed. And otherwise, this motion represents the budget recommendations along with the levy amounts to support those budgets. And with that, the detail like with the elementary is on page fifteen, or not like the elementary, but we have similar detail, and it's on page fifteen for the high school. There is less, you know, really involved in, on the high school side in terms of larger increases. The main modification was in the high school general fund, which we talked about already, and the fact that the GTB support isn't happening. And so there is an increase in the base levy to support the fact that the GTB went down. But still, the levy increase on the high school side is six eighty-one, six hundred and eighty-one thousand. In the general fund, that includes the overbase vote of one twenty-eight plus the base levy support. Transportation budget is going down, or the levy amount, sorry, is going down. This represents the availability of funds to reappropriate on the high school side where there weren't any on the elementary side. Hopefully, next year there will. Very little change in tuition. Like the elementary, adult education is, the budgets remain the same, and we've reappropriated funds, so the levy has gone down. Technology is just the approved levy, the seven fifty, that will continue as the levy. There's no increase. Like the high school or the elementary, the debt service increase in levy is really tied to that ability we had to reappropriate funds is associated with the GTB in FY twenty-two. And then the building reserve, the levy amount is, the increase is the amount that was approved, that's seven hundred thousand. The additional levy amount, which isn't an increase, represents the permissive levy to support major maintenance. I didn't mention that on the high school. That's two ninety-six on the high school. And really, you, and you'll see that was the levy amount last year in FY twenty-three. And so we levy that, and then the state kicks in a hundred and twenty-seven thousand to support major maintenance aid on the high school. And on the elementary side, it's a bigger support. It's just over three hundred thousand, no, two hundred and sixty-seven thousand, but it gets us to six hundred thousand. So it's utilizing some permissive levy on the building reserve to generate some state funds, which we've been doing since this is, this permissive levy option has been put in place. And then I'll jump back to that graph on page nine. And just like with the elementary, if our seventy-one point two five mills for all non-debt service budgeted funds remained flat through now, that's like the elementary. It's an additional two million dollars. But they've dropped, they've dropped to fifty point oh six, and that's because we levy to amounts. We don't levy to mills. And then finally, I'm sorry to bounce around like this, but then on page sixteen, you'll see the same information and really the same qualifier here is that there's work to be done here. But it's a good start to reflect this change, this recalibration of the budget to get budgets set to where they're tighter, closer to expenditures. This is a post-COVID deal. I mean, COVID, there's very little to rely upon in terms of expenditures, but we're looking prior to COVID and then the last couple of years. So this will be more to come on the high school side as well. So happy to answer any questions.
Vice chair Walker Andrews?
I just wanted to make sure I understood on page fifteen, when you were talking about the debts, no, the building reserve. So in fiscal year twenty-three, it was two ninety-six, and now it's nine ninety-six. And that's just the seven hundred thousand is what, I mean, why it's that much higher?
Yeah, that's why it's that much higher. The seven hundred was the voted levy, that's the increase. And then the levy amount is nine ninety-six, eight seventy-four. So it's the voted levy of seven hundred plus the two ninety-six, eight seventy-four. So it's the combination of the two is our levy, our total levy for the billing reserve.
Any other questions? Vice chair Hobbin?
I was just curious about the decrease in so many salaries at the high school level.
Yeah, and it kind of goes back to, don't rely on that too great because what we're incorporating is a little bit of the opposite of the elementary. So if you, if we go to the, the projections on page ten, we're peeling off, down at the bottom, the IDIB allocation and the change in the allocation and the ESER growth, the support for ESER growth there. Those are moving salaries outside of the general fund, as an example. So when we make that adjustment, it's going to have an effect of reducing salaries as a result. It's not because there's position elimination at all. It's just that it's picked up outside the general fund. And our goal, obviously, is to build it into the general fund. And so when we, you know, just look at FY twenty-four from an ESER standpoint, in particular in the high school, there's a variety of positions that have been picked up over the last couple of years that are ESER funded. And they're not incorporated in the general fund now, but in the FY twenty-five, a lot of those are ones that I think we want to incorporate. And we'll dive into those a little more detail.
Trustee Mercer, and then trustee Decker.
Could you explain what the building reserve budget is as opposed to the amount of money that we levy? Like, what is that other one point six million dollars?
Yeah, that's a great question. So we have budget balance that is what we've described as carryover in the billing reserve. And we budget it every year. And so it's, when we adopt a budget, it's how much budget we have, both in terms of new levy and amount re-appropriated. So that represents the full funds that are available. And really, the difference is both carryover and the amount that the board had set aside for O and M department to support prior to the billing reserve passage.
Thanks. My question is, I should know this, but how long is our period of debt service to the bonds?
I should know this too. So we passed, we passed, or we issued bonds in two thousand and sixteen and two thousand and seventeen. And so they're twenty-year bonds, so it'll be thirty-six and thirty-seven. thirty-seven. And the, the good thing, if you look at that, that, that graph, you can see the elementary debt service mills were, were zero for a healthy stretch. And, and you can also see the debt service part of the graph is, is nose-diving, so there will be a time.
That actually is exactly what I was wondering about, because the high school, I mean, this budget projection for twenty-four, obviously, as you've said a couple of times, is like preliminary, but a reduction of sixteen and a half dollars on a hundred thousand dollar house, that's, you know, on an average Missoula house, that's a lot more than sixteen dollars right now, and that's cool to be able to think that could happen. Is the debt service line item, is that something that's going to vary or fluctuate with any sort of interest rates, or are we just going to be able to anticipate that it will continue to decrease throughout the rest of the, you know, years of its life?
You know, the, the amount of the payment is set at a pretty consistent amount, so we, what we'll see is, is when that first bond issue, can't remember the amount we did the first one at, but when that first bond issue expires, it's just a, a drop, and, and we won't have, when it's paid off is really what it amounts to. And, and you don't see it here, because I don't have those years, but I think it was about three years ago, we had, we paid off other bonds that were issued in two thousand, and that we refunded, or the board refunded, and when that fell off, it was seven hundred thousand dollars. So it's a significant reduction in, I mean, a true reduction in taxes because that, those funds are no longer levied, period. The, the tax impact here that I show is, I don't really promote it as, oh, look, we saved you taxes, because we know that the tax valuation means that what was a hundred thousand before is a hundred and thirty-seven thousand now, times five, if your home's five, was five hundred thousand. And to the extent your tax value increase is consistent with the community increase, what we said you would pay in terms of mills and taxes on our ballot in May for the building reserve is, is a wash. I mean, it's, it's a wash, or it's consistent, it's the same.
Any other trustee questions? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the recommendation of the budget? Moved by trustee Witt, second by trustee of Garris. Any final trustee comments? Any public comment? All trustees in favor for approving the high school budget, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all trustees present. The time is now six forty-seven, and we are adjourned.